Communication from the public, from Dorothy Cheney. And if you would like to come up, you could maybe stand here or how about right here so that you're between Jenny.
Dorothy, do you want to just come up front?
No, I can just stand here. I'm not too close to Jenny. I think I could. So, um, so thank you for allowing me to speak. You know, it's been a crazy past 16 days and I think there's been a lot of dinner table conversations about issues of race in this country. I know that in my family where we are racially diverse, we've had lots of conversations. And so, we actually had a conversation about how we can move into action as a school district. And so, of course, my kids, who have the greatest ideas in the world, proposed that we do some sort of racial alliance, just like we have a gay-straight alliance. Why don't we also look at how we create alliances among races? So, we started doing some research and actually, there's a racial justice alliance throughout the state of Vermont within high schools, and there's also diversity clubs in other high schools. And I just want to read what the purpose of the racial justice alliance in Vermont is. It says racial justice alliances are social groups. They provide a sense of community and a space for youth of color and white allies to build a social network where their identities are respected. Lots of groups organize barbecues, movie nights, field trips, attend conferences together, but they're a great way to build community at your school and lessen the isolation that students of color might otherwise experience. And I think that last sentence is a piece that's so important to me. Again, having two of the very few persons of color in the school, there really is a sense of isolation. And I know that we're in strange times and who knows what the fall is going to look like, but I think there's an opportunity for the school to embrace this concept and see if there could be such a club established within the high school. And certainly, I have some volunteer time, so I'd be happy to help out getting it done. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I ask that you just stay put for a little while and just remind the public, when we hear from the public communication, it's, we don't have an agenda item with that topic, so we're, we don't discuss it because we have to give a meeting notice on topics of discussion. But if you would like to get your information to us, it could be beneficial for future discussion. So, the reason I asked Dorothy Cheney to stay up here is because she happens to be our next agenda item, which is a recognition for her six years on the school board. And now, why don't we come a little bit closer. Dorothy served for six years and first of all, I'll give you a certificate. Thank you for your service. And I just want to say personally that I have so appreciated your passion for our kids. And second of all, even with that passion, your willingness to still discuss the details and listen to other people's points of view. And that has, was absolutely valuable during your service for six years on the school board. And before we go any further though, I want to see if anyone else has anything they want to say to Dorothy.
I'll start. Dorothy, we've had our arm wrestling from time to time on the board, but I think that's the, actually, a result of having a strong board, that we've always been willing to listen to each other's ideas and there's been a lot of discussion. I'm also very much aware that you have always been in favor of kids and parents in this school district, and I appreciate your thought.
I will go next. I wouldn't be on the board if it wasn't for Dorothy. I wouldn't have been inspired as an individual to do this because I was really just watching, watching Dorothy run for and work on the board and learn so much more about our community. So, it's been personally fulfilling and also, I think she's done an incredible job for our community and for all of the students in Marshville.
I didn't really get to know Dorothy until, aside from name and reputation, until I actually got so lucky as to be elected. And I thank you for your mentoring and taking in your ring and showing me the ropes and spending some time over glasses of wine and sort of in guidance and friendship. And your discussion was invaluable and you would help holes and things and push boundaries. And I really appreciate that. You're the best.
That wine drinking did not take place during school board meetings.
No, no.
And I too have the pleasure of having your tutelage for my, getting my feet wet here in this school board situation. And I feel so much indebtedness to you at the outset of this journey, kind of putting up, putting up the scaffolding for me as I seem to be jumping here and there. And I really appreciated your gentle scaffolding that helped me get on the path towards being a, I hope, a successful board member. And it's just been a wonderful journey and I thank you so much for continuing.
I didn't get any mentorship, but thank you for your service. I really appreciate it.
Dorothy, it's been wonderful working with you on the board. So many topics we've given to discussion. And through the discussion, you had opened my eyes to see things from a different perspective. And I appreciate that. And then the private side, there was a few issues that was in my life that I called you, but you opened up, took the time to talk, and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Thank you. Thank you. So, guys, I appreciate it. No, you know, I, I just thank you. It's been great. It's been hard, but fun. And isn't it rewarding? And the board is so strong and the school district's in really good shape. So, I'm just so delighted and blessed that I had a chance to serve and look forward to whatever the next step is because you know I'm not going away. So...
Well, and I'm so thrilled that you brought your beautiful daughters because I know they're your inspiration for all of your service to the school district and the students in our district. And so, thank you for loaning her to us. And we do have flowers, so it's kind of like beauty queen. And here is a card and there is a little gift in here too from the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
You are appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Now, come back to work. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move right on down the agenda. I think finance is next.
Okay, I will go over the meeting we had earlier today. I'll leave the action items till the end. We went over a couple of the budgets, the tech budget and the buildings and grounds budget. And with all the things that have happened with COVID, there is direction coming from the state that is highly likely that the budget given to us for expenditure over the next year is going to be modified by a state-level budget repair bill accounting for a significant shortcoming in state income tax revenue. And with that in mind, even though the numbers aren't hard yet, there's been instruction from DPI to be looking at every aspect of the budget. So, we did a couple of things. We went over what needed to be in these budgets and also what could be cut or delayed. And just using buildings and grounds as an example, there was just a really thoughtful process in both of those departments in terms of cutting things where something that was planned expenditure could be delayed. It was maybe preventative maintenance or whatever. But then, making sure that we, what we did retain as an expenditure for the upcoming year was where, for example, money has already been spent on lockers that just need to be installed and getting things finished or things that had already been bumped the prior year, parking lot repairs, for example, that really need to get done because they were an item from a prior year that got bumped for expense reasons or things that are a safety issue like concrete. So, the same thing happened on the tech side. Things that can be postponed are marked for possible postponement if we get a budget repair. And things that can be, can be cut are looked at, other things that need to continue to go into place, need to go forward. And of course, on the tech side, being prepared for a possible component of distance learning means we don't want to get very behind on, on the tech side. The other two things we looked at that are not in the action items were the, were the variance report. And this is usually just something that shows how, how we've been spending money month to month and how does that compare to the prior year, et cetera. Obviously, the last few months of the school year have significant various, variance in terms of what was anticipated expenditure and actualized expenditure. On the faculty salary side, we had a lot of money left in accounts because there was no substitute teaching going on. We had money left in the busing account. That money, which amounts to, you know, possibly $1 to $1.5 million, it's not something that we can, that we want to earmark for something else to see up because there's a possibility that, that the state will come down and say, actually, you guys are on the hook for some of this. We, we need you to completely pay bus budgets because otherwise bus companies are going to go out of business or whatever it is. So, that money will stay kind of in reserve. The hope is hopefully, it can go towards the shortfalls that we might be anticipating in terms of next year's budget, but that's, that's all sort of in place to look at. And then the final item that's not an action item is beginning the process to look at the possibility of needing an ongoing operational referendum as we have needed in this district for many, many years now because of a cap that is put on what we are allowed to raise from the tax base without doing this referendum. And we, the administration and staff have put together the list of priorities that need to be looked at. We are going to be looking much more closely in next month and the month after in terms of how that referendum would be written and what exact clubs we would be looking at. So then, moving into the two action items. One is act, is the preliminary budget for 2021. This is required for the finance department to look at, although it is very uncertain at the best of times. Obviously, right now, it's even more uncertain. We could have up to $2 million off of what we thought we could spend based on what the state decides if they go into a budget repair bill down in Madison. And when we look at what, what could happen in terms of comparing what, you know, without even accounting for those $2 million, when we look at the budget, it is a 5% reduction from last year's budget in this district because of the anomaly of the last few years in terms of paying off the athletic facility. So, we've come to the end of the very big budget items for paying off the new stadium and that's, for that reason, the budget actually looks up a little bit smaller. And then, of course, there's the question of what it's really going to look like when we find out how much less money we are going to get than what was planned for over the longer period of time. And so, that budget was in the board docs and we're looking for approval of the preliminary budget. That's coming from the committee.
So, on behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve the preliminary budget for, and my agenda says 2019-20, but we're talking 20...
2021.
2021. So, just to note that it is 2020-2021.
Shows that we are...
Yeah, the board docs, it looks correct. I don't know...
I fixed it. I was missing a page. Sorry.
Any questions or feedback? Then we'll go ahead and take the role.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And then the other item is approval of a resolution that you should see in board docs for supplemental pay for professional staff. This is an action item, a fairly small total dollar amount of $26,000 that breaks out to roughly $100 per teacher that can be earned. I think it was a discussion in the, of the details in employee relations in terms of how it goes about getting the supplemental pay through the extra activities, but in finance committee, we want to bring forward the, the resolution to approve this pay.
So, on behalf of finance committee, we have a motion to approve the resolution for supplemental pay for professional staff. Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take them.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Before we move to the next committee, I'd like to, if I could, make an amendment, I guess, or just amend my report for employee relations. I forgot something that the board should be made aware of here that we did discuss. This is brought to us by administration, a proposed special education program assistant position, initial proposal for additional support for student services area, and need has been identified. I guess the bottom line here is to hire this individual to take care of, I don't want to call them secretary or maybe procedural type issues that school psychologists right now are getting bogged down with in terms of tons and tons of paperwork and other formalities and reports that have to be sent in to the DPI. The suggestion was made, and I would agree with it, that we need to have our school psychologists out among the kills as much as possible in dealing with issues as opposed to maybe sitting at a desk and rubber stamping all kinds of papers. So, that position will be funded 100% through federal funds and the item will come back for more consideration in July. Thank you.
So, if anyone wants to read anything more about it, it is in the meeting update that is attached to the board docs.
I was just going to say, that's not an action item. That was just an update. That might be why, because you got into your action pieces right there.
Right. I went, I forgot that I had this other piece that I should have talked about. Thank you.
But we, we do anticipate bringing that back to committee as a potential action item next month.
So, that'll give you time to read the employee relations meeting update and familiarize yourself with that before it being on next month's agenda.
Thank you.
So, I pass this to you.
Anyone need a good whack here?
So, curriculum and instruction, this is a second reading and we're bringing the K through 12 science curriculum to the board as a motion on behalf of the committee for approval.
Okay, so I would bring that forward on behalf of the committee. I didn't hear entirely what you said there, but your motion that you want to bring forward on behalf of your committee. Any discussion? Jenny?
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
And then, on behalf of the committee, we are also bringing the agriculture curriculum, grade seven to 12, to the board for approval. And it's a motion on behalf of the committee.
Okay, so we have before us the motion on behalf of the committee to approve the agriculture curriculum. It's an action item. Any discussion? Seeing none, take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And the only other remarkable thing I wanted to point out is if you read our meeting update, the meeting started at 3:30 and ended at 3:31. And I don't think we've ever had that happen before, but the two items were second readings and we had no feedback. So, we set a record. Then we will move on to facilities, safety and transportation. Mr. Conrady?
All right. All I have is a meeting update. We met with Cobuson Bus Service, the new bus service coming in. If you have, have had drove past Midstate Truck in the lot, you'll see Cobuson on the side of a few of the buses. Those are the buses from Marshville. This was they towed me. So, the buses are here. The phone number for the bus company, there have been some questions as if it changed. It did not change. The phone number, 715-387-0101 for anybody who needs a call. Right now, they're working on getting all the bus drivers hired. Sounded like they had doggone damn near, everybody from the bus service coming to, coming back to it. So, that looked really good. They went over their training procedures and how they're working with their training. So, some of the procedures coming in, things look really good there. Cobuson is still working on the daily bus routes. They're about two-thirds done as of a week ago. So, they're working with the school system with the bus routes. That's all becoming through administration to be worked out and make sure that was good for everybody. All the buses will be equipped with two-way radios, GPS, camera systems immediately. They estimate that they'll have Wi-Fi in the second year on all those school buses. So, that would be kind of nice for the students as they're working, get their iPads running on the buses. We did go over a potential impact of budget reductions for facilities and grounds with the next, with the next, with this year coming, 2020-21. Rough estimates, they're looking at about $250,000 that we'd be able to take out of the budget. But as we'll, as we're moving forward here, we'll see where we're going to be and non-present the budget tonight at finance. So, we'll kind of see where we're going to be with the budget as the school year comes, comes closer. The HSR study, there's long-range facility needs update. We had a committee, we suspended the committee for the time being since March because of COVID-19. We intend on bringing that back as soon as things seem, when they're clear enough to come back together as a group and continue it. As far as the Maple project, because the Maple project was already on its way, planning, everything was moving forward. It did grow up for bits. It looks like Marwood got the job, so Marwood will be starting their job in June, and I don't know if they had started yet or not.
No, we've gotten the contracts all signed, I think, today or tomorrow.
Okay, so it looks like they're signing the contract with Marwood. I'm quite sure Marwood's going to do a very fine job for us. They had done other work for us in the past year at the high school and everything turned out very well. That's our end. If anybody's got any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Then we'll move on to policy and legislation. Dr. Schul.
So, we met on May 27. Couldn't do it in under a minute. It's been a little. It wasn't much covered. There is an action item regarding time and effort reporting that we took, we went through some agreeing, just some updates to the policy, allowing for accommodations and other legal leaves regarding basically what happens during unexpected or extraordinary circumstances for time and effort reporting. And that will come, I'll bring that as an action item later. We have the first reading of the elementary student handbook. Not a lot, but we made some tweaks. We'll find that in board docs as well. If anybody had any questions about the elementary student handbook, we have the answer. So, we did not, that was it. We didn't really talk much. We'll be looking at more annual updates in the future, I anticipate. So, the action item tonight is on behalf of the policy committee and is for approval of 6116, time and effort reporting.
So, we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve policy 6116, time and effort reporting. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take the role.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope.
Then we'll move on to approval of retirements.
I'll put forth these as individual or motions from an individual board member. We have an approval of retirement for Jeannie Bell, library media center assistant. And that will be, that's actually been effective already for this month, but this is the official work, the official retirement document or date. So, on behalf of myself as a board member, I put forth that motion to approve the retirement of Jeannie Bell.
Second? Thank you. So, we have a second. Any discussion or comments? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the one retirement.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the role on the motion to approve those three resignations.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Any questions? Mr. Conrady?
No, I'm done.
Then, the next thing is approval of our open enrollment applications. And I believe you have a list in board docs. And this takes a motion in a second. And it's part of what we have to do for the open enrollment process. Do I have a motion to approve?
You approve.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? We'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Anything else?
Nope.
Then we'll move on to approval of retirements.
I'll put forth these as individual or motions from an individual board member. We have an approval of retirement for Jeannie Bell, library media center assistant. And that will be, that's actually been effective already for this month, but this is the official work, the official retirement document or date. So, on behalf of myself as a board member, I put forth that motion to approve the retirement of Jeannie Bell.
Second? Thank you. So, we have a second. Any discussion or comments? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the one retirement.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Any questions? Mr. Conrady? Any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the role.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?[1721.13]
Then the next thing is approval of our open enrollment applications. And I believe you have a list in board docs. And this takes a motion and a second. And it's part of what we have to do for the open enrollment process. Do I have a motion to approve?
It will be approved.
Thank you. And a second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? We'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And next, we have the middle school WIAA membership renewal for 2020, 2021. And that document is in your board docs. And what is your desire regarding that renewal of WIAA membership for the middle school? Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Eukaitis and a second by Dr. Sitwalla. Any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
And then we have approval of the 2020 to 2021 high school WIAA membership renewal. What is your desire regarding that?
I'll also move to approve that.
Okay. Second? Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Eukaitis and a second by Dr. Sitwalla. Any questions? Go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
And then there is a proposal here to temporarily close the use of district facilities by non-district groups and organizations. And in your board docs, you see kind of a list, give you an idea of who those outside organizations and individuals were who used our facilities last year during this timeframe. So what is your desire regarding that?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the temporary, temporarily close the use of district facilities by non-district groups and organizations. By, Mr. Conrady?
A second.
Okay. And a second. Any discussion on that?
I think the key word there is temporarily, and obviously that's due to the pandemic situation. So it's just a temporary closure.
And my question is, could that be a discussion of administration? And at first, I saw like a quilting club if they came in and wanted to use it, the social way, as opposed to some of the other organizations that were really for kids that would be a little harder to control physical contact.
I would tell you the intent for, the only potential consideration would be outdoor situations. The intent of this on the administration bringing this forward is concerns about the situation that we're in and the fact that if we did allow the use of indoor facilities, the additional cleaning and disinfecting that that would put place upon our staff to have to do on top of their regular summer cleaning, given the circumstances. There are different districts are taking different approaches to this. You know, there are stories out there that I think the one that I most recently read on Wisconsin Education News was the Blonky School District doing similar, something taking action in a similar regard to temporary, temporarily close the access of their facilities outside because of that concern. More locally, the examples that I can think of is Wisconsin Rapids has not made a decision yet, but they have it coming forward to a board meeting soon. The Pittsfield School District is telling me that they have put some measures in place where they are limiting, they have an outright said no. But in cases where they are allowing it, they've added additional fees for additional cleaning as a, as a consequence, as a result of it. That's not something that I necessarily wanted to get into, have, you know, having to put additional cost on people because we just don't want to have to deal with that on top of everything else that's going on with, with planning right, right now. And especially until we know what's going to happen with access and availability for our own students. We are reviewing the possibility of some limited facility use, especially when it comes to athletics, starting in the month of July. But we don't have a plan in place yet. We've just started those conversations this week in our athletics department with our coaches. And I, I guess what I'm getting at is I don't, I don't feel, I'm concerned about saying we're going to open the use of our facilities outside when our own kids don't have access to it right now on top of not wanting to be in a position of putting extra stress and strain and cost on our custodial maintenance department to do additional clean, you know, at this point in time.
Thank you for the explanation. That helps a lot. And so like if the club wouldn't be meeting indoors at the school forest, there might be a concern that, like, I'm going to do something outdoors there?
Potentially.
That potentially might be something we would consider. So, but there would be some discretion on behalf of the administration, is that what I-
Yeah, and we would encourage people from the public to contact us to give direction. Two other examples I'd like to speak to, and this is specific to outdoor facility use. We do anticipate opening limited outside availability of some of our facilities starting on July 1. Examples would be right now, the Bowes and Tennis Courts have not been, we have not put nets up and that facility is not available. Right now, our tentative plan is to put up half of the nets on Bowes and Courts on July 1. Every other court, so half of the courts are available. Our tennis courts clearly get used by members of the public on their own without scheduling with us. And we're, we're okay with that because we're going to set up every other net. And so people on, on their own accord are going to show up and use those facilities. The school forest, the trails will be open for mountain biking. If you want to walk the trails, if you want to use a fishing pond like you would normally, but we, if, if this is approved, would not have the lodge available for, as a rental for outside groups. So that example you're getting at, referencing that, that group may go to the school forest and use the outdoor facilities like anybody showing up to walk the trails.
So that was my question also, was just specifically the mountain bike club. So they were planning to use the enclosure for the, for their use. But they still get, they still go there and bike around?
Use the trails, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Eukaitis?
Yes.
Then do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.[1779.84]